Submitted the right amount of paperwork, she paid us appropriately. She's now ready to go. So we'll do the pledge, you're more rally over the leaves.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the God for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with a vision and justice for all.
Thanks, Mark. Close?
I am ready.
Good. How do you say?
Gravioli.
Like almost like gravioli?
Almost like ground.
Are you...
Yeah, that's the shape.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna ask if you're close at home. You know, you're from around six to eight o'clock. I don't know. Just got there. Okay. We can make sure we can sign again. Where were the nine samples?
I didn't want to look in the house.
Oh, okay. Make them all make a book of that again. A second. Any discussion on it? All favor?
I have.
He posted on the approval of the grant. So if you... If you can... I did. I'll be second and I'll leave it on. If you could review that, yeah, for next week, I will. We'll message you. I'll look input, right at the top.
Oh, good. Yeah. May I?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm not sure for the...
It's right there.
I'm not sure that I put... I did forgot to put my emails in, so this one out. Hi, welcome and congratulations.
Do you want to come right up here? I'll meet you over here then with us. Are you all right? Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can. All right. I was dealing with Alex Orley.
We just need your name for the record and...
Yeah, oh, I'm so sorry. My name is Jane Kennedy. I live at two ten, so it's crossing the road. And I was dealing with Alex Orley about three weeks ago. This was after the car, another car went through my fence. And so I was talking to him about what we might do. This is the fourth time in thirty years. And it's always at night. And it's always someone who's either impaired or not paying attention. This particular time, the individual was very responsible, showed up the next morning. The policeman will appreciate this. He didn't stay there that night. He just... I don't know how he got his car out from his truck. No idea what the amount of damage he did. So in talking to Alex, who I think is pretty experienced, he said there was one... We don't know what the state is going to do. And I wrote a letter to the state. And Alex said to bring it to me, you know, bring it to him. And he would forward it to the state, asking for some sort of one of those signs that is reflective with the big arrows. As Alex said, it depend on the amount of traffic. It depends on a lot of things. But there used to be... I'm sorry, there used to be an island there. The state took the island out. So that cars would turn at the end of Matthews Road and turn to the right or turn to the left. That island is no longer there. And it hasn't been there for the last three accidents or the last three times we've had the fence taken down. And shrubbery and so forth and so on. So I know that you're new. And I know that you're going to have to get caught up and whatnot. I did have John, my landscape guy came down. He's going to give me an estimate for putting up something that a car will not be able to go through. So we're discussing that. However, Alex did have a very good idea. There are stop signs. And there is a stop sign right at the end of Matthews Road. It's kind of... It's there. I mean, you can see it during the day. But he said there were those that were reflective. And he thought that that might not be a bad idea to replace the one that's there with one that's reflective. This would at least help a little bit. So I'm just kind of trying to get our new John, the administrator, Lori, up to speed. Again, there's a lot going on and you've got a lot to take care of. And I apologize for not sending you the form. But I did email and I didn't get any response. So I thought, I'll just come on up and see what's happening. You have not heard anything from the state, correct?
Correct. There was discussion with DPW, Joe DeRusso.
I'm sorry?
There was discussion with the DPW director, Joe DeRusso?
No.
No, there was. No, I'm saying there was. And they're going to put in a white line. And so we can talk with him with regard to putting in a reflective sign.
Okay, that I think would be of a help. Again, it's four times in twenty... in thirty years. It's not like it happens every other weekend. But there's more traffic now. There's more stuff going on now. My neighbors who have been cleaning up along their property lines say that ninety percent of what they're picking up is alcohol. So, you know, I don't get too much in the way of trash. I just kind of wanted to say hi. And could something be done? I have not received a... an estimate from John Lessing yet. As to what we think we're going to do. I would prefer the state did something, if at all possible. It would be really nice to have one of those, you know, signs at the end of the T-200. Nice and, you know, we'd wait when we're pleased to hit it, you know? Okay?
What one approach you can take? The District Four office.
Yeah, I... That's who I wrote to.
But have you stopped in?
No, I haven't.
You can try that approach.
Okay, they were there during the day?
They're there during the day. And it's Frank L.
Okay, now I know.
Trying to pronounce his last name.
Yeah, I remember writing it out. It's very, very long. Okay? Okay, so I wrote to him. I don't know whether Alex ever forwarded that, but...
I'm sure he did.
I'm sure he did because he seems very efficient, very optimal. So, you know, so, okay. All right, so you suggested I stop in there? I can do that.
For that part, and for our part, we'll talk with Joe DeRusso about the reflective sign. And when the crosswalk lights go in on Matthews Road this summer, that's when he plans to do the striping for the stop...
Okay. I know that they have signs... I know they have stop signs where there's electricity that have the white light or have the lights around them. But that's another whole issue because you have... I mean, there's no real plug in there, you know? Okay?
Yep.
All right, okay.
Good job.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Well, I talked to Jim about this because I thought Alex did such a great idea. Great, I mean, great help. Okay, thank you. All right. So thank you for taking me first. I see.
So just one comment to make things feel really good.
Oh, good.
So my friends had, I think it was twelve people went through it in a ten-year period.
Oh, wow. Much more.
Yeah. I went to the state to see if they would put a guardrail and sign it. And I was denied. So that's the bad part of it.
Yeah.
I put my own shovel and signs up.
Did you?
And nobody's hit... Nobody's gone to it since.
Okay.
So if you don't get any... Anything, call me.
I'll call you.
We'll buy the signs.
Okay, we'll see. We'll see what we can do, Mark. Okay, thank you very much and thank you. I know you have a busy schedule.
Thanks, Mark. Josh, welcome.
How's it going?
Good. How are you doing?
Good. You're prepping someone else? Oh, yeah. Oh. Might need to recycle it.
Recycle it?
Yes.
Really? They do recycle it?
Sometimes we just find it works out perfect.
Right? Use what we can.
So I figured just a basic current update on what we've been working on, doing what we have coming up. And that's just a brief outline, follow along. But I'll go over all the stuff. So right now, past couple of weeks, we've just been really busy cleaning up, mulching, picking up trash, making place look like... Make a recycling center and not a dump right now. Every coming out, I'm going to do there's always stuff that's been buried and the plow tracks over the grass. Breaking all that up, getting everything cleaned up pretty good. Nick's been working?
Hmm? Burning.
Slowly, but we're getting there. Slowly, but sure do. Doing a lot of personnel training, working on our safety and then the merchant D E S certification training. And Nick's been handling that whole thing. I believe we have three people that are all done for the year already. And then just a few of the people who don't work as much, we gotta get in there a little more to get some more hours in. But so far, it's been pretty good. Currently, we have four senior operators, set fives, that's the top. Even some of the newer people, Luke, he's been working on getting... He has a plan to get five in one year. So that's the P R's of training. I told him, go crazy if you want to. So we've got quite a bit of knowledge kicking around there right now, which is great.
Does that open up opportunities for you? With the extra knowledge? Does it give you an opportunity to do some things that you might otherwise be able to do?
A little bit, more or less. It's kind of takes away some of the worry for me. So I can be out back all day long, not to worry about it because everybody knows what they're doing. I can answer pretty much any question. And we always have radios on the top. But it kind of helps to educate residents also. So as they come up to the window, they can justify why we can't do something or where something goes. So it's been really good on that aspect of it. Like you were saying, brush pile. Been doing quite a bit burning. I looked at maybe burning that first pile in place. But once I dug into it, it's all compost and leaves on the inside. So if I was to burn that, I'd burn for days, as it is, and would shoot up a lot of ash and smoke. So even if I had the fire permits, be there, still shoot stuff up in the air. I'd rather not send it everywhere. It just would create more work. So I've been digging out slowly and just taking the compost out, putting it under a compost pile. And I've been... I put a woodshed down by the back gate. And I think I've filled it five times now. People just keep taking it. So basically just chopping it up, manageable size and for campfires, at house use. So everyone love that. So it's been working out really well. Any questions so far or I'm just motoring along? Next one is the wastewater operator certification. I've been pretty involved that lately. Joe's been a huge help in supporting me with... Supporting Nick and I for getting training done. Any questions related to it? I sat in on composite jar testing for the phosphorus removal pilot program test with underwood engineers. That was cool to see how that all worked. And helped Kurt set up the composite sampler in the headworks. And it was taking a sample every hour for twenty-four hours. And then they separated that into five different jars, added different amounts of chemicals to see what the actual flocculation of it was and how much solids it was actually grabbing.
It was not working?
Flocculation. It just basically cleans it together so it settles a little plastic. So that was really interesting to see. And then I sat in April, I sat in on the webinar with the results of the pilot program. They discussed the management of the way to use, how we're going to use it, when and where. And so that should be starting... I think Joe was in last week, wasn't he? I think that's starting in the next couple of weeks, I believe. So we're just getting prepped and getting a place for the chemicals to be stored for now and then how we're going to pump it over to where it's going to be dropped into the headworks. And then I went and sat in on a solar array sidewalk with Joe, Kurt and the solar array guy. And that was pretty interesting to see and how they're going to basically hook it all up and where it's going and how they're going to do it. So that was pretty informational.
Did they give you time?
I said a couple of weeks, I believe.
So I think it may be operational.
I think that's what you're saying, yeah. They've got all their equipment set up there. I think they're just basically waiting on the panels to be delivered at this point, so... And then beginning April, I had a phone call on a day off from the guy from the state, Candellis. And he was asking me questions about my certification, where I wanted to go with it, how it was going, my hours. He wanted to set up a sidewalk with me. And so I talked to Joe first, made sure everything was good and if we should do it. And I thought it would be a good show of faith with the state just to show where I can have hours and a couple more operators in there. Went pretty well.
Did Joe attend that with you?
Yep, yep, yeah. So I was glad to have him there. It went pretty well.
Joe was very smart when you called him.
Yeah, I didn't want to do anything that...
You could say something that occurred to Joe.
Exactly, several.
Joe was good.
I wouldn't... I'm pretty good about not over saying something, but on the same hand, it's just a face. Just a face, so it was nice to have him there and support on that end.
Very good, I was glad to hear that.
It actually went really well. It was a little nerve wracking because I got pretty much tested on the spot and had to give him a sidewalk around the whole plan, point stuff out, tell him what we're doing and why we're doing.
Right.
And right now, I'm working on going through the five thousand old files I have there. Scott has everything pretty much in cabinets. But now I'm just organizing it to get familiar with everything in there, all the engineering studies. There's stuff back to the early eighties. So I'm working on just to get a full picture of everything. I showed the two state guys that, explained why I was doing it just to get a full grasp on everything. So they were pretty happy with it. But they want me to try and get fifteen hours a week. Right now, I'm doing six to seven. So it's kind of hard to get more than that there on a daily basis just because sometimes it's an hour and a half a day and done. But other days, it can be more, it could be five, six, so I've got...
Is this something that they would like or something they're going to require?
Require, but...
Could you talk to Joe about putting a plan in so we can...
Yep.
Make that happen?
Yep, yep. Because we're really helpful with that. And it's difficult now because I have to have someone there to supervise me at all times. Nick and I both have to recertify. And I've got a hundred and ninety-four hours out of two hundred and twenty-five done. My cutoff for the two hundred and twenty-five hours is June sixth. So I'm ahead of schedule. But I have still thirty-one hours left. And then once I'm out of the operating and training O I T, I can do it on my own. So then, say Saturdays, I can go do the testing, do some more filing, organizing. So I think that's where I'm really going to get the bulk of my hours done. So once I have that thirty-one, thirty-one hours, I can be on my own. Nick can train me in anything to do with the plant, whether it's tree trees or skimming the lagoon or trash that's floating, anything along those lines, organizing files. So it'll all count for hours and it'll...
Where's Nick in the process?
He had this interview for certification February sixth, I believe. And so his clock starts at February sixth of next year. He's got forty, forty-five hours down. And so the same thing, once I get primed, then he can come in, spend more time with me on the weekends there, say Sunday mornings. Sunday mornings, we can go in, get two, three hours in and then do our usual Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays. It's brief during the week, so it's not too, too bad. And they also showed me some of the training that I can take online. Some of it will count for up to ninety hours. But it's an eight-hundred-page book. And so you have to order the test. If you fail the test, you have to order it again. So I have three books right now. So that'll give me all the hours I need for that. And then they talked about wanting me to... I think he was talking December. He said he was going to come back in six months and touch base again and see where I'm at, go through that, meet with Nick also. So it'll be helpful. And it's good to have the face-to-face meeting with him, showing him how we're actually doing. And he said even if I don't give my hours, that we could go for an exception. But they want to be comfortable that I can do it on my own. So that's why he's going to come back. And so that might give him the grace period and be able to cut loose a little early. So I've got a bunch of those trainings to do. And I think I've got a good chunk of the projects I've done. I've been skimming through, taking the in-book tests, stuff like that. I've been doing pretty well on it and fascinating stuff. So I'm more driven to want to learn more about it. And then meeting Nick and Kurt. I went to Jackson Park first for a water and fire chemical safety at the Jackson Fire Department. And that's five hours of training a day. So it'll be good. And I do already have enough hours to recertify next year already. So you can carry ten hours over. So he said it's not going to hurt to just keep going and going and work side to side. So a little hectic right now, but it'll all work out, man. Just got to get past this thirty-one hour point.
So the next hundred and eighty hours?
About that, yeah.
Does he do that over the course of the year or can he do that in a shorter time period? Um, once you're off the O I T and he's working with you.
Yeah, so you could do...
Your roles generate hours. So could that move more quickly for him or...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Joe and I were talking about doing the same track that I've been doing. That way, he'll be up to speed quicker. Especially if I can give him a grade-two license next year and I can technically be the backup to I R C. And so if Kurt was on vacation, there's no issues with anything, the plant's covered. And I'd have a backup, say I was sick while he was on vacation. Nick could slide into that. So should work out really well. And Kurt's been a great teacher. Get a lot of game plans there. So I think it'll work out really well. Any other questions on the wastewater portion?
All good.
We've started the three through seven plastic pilot program. We haven't advertised it to residents just because we're kind of trying to see how much we'll actually get, if it's worth it. The pricing stayed pretty steady right now. I think it's at three cents a pound revenue compared to paintings. Seven cents a pound cost and compactors. We started it in the February and we're averaging about a bin every week and a half. And it's about sixty, seventy pounds a bin. So we figure it'll probably be a couple of months until we have a bail. And then we'll see how it actually bails up because we don't want to say we won't sort these out. It's not going to work, one of those things.
When are we going to go public? I was thinking about it. I don't throw mine in, but I probably do a third in the plastics or in the three to seven.
Yeah.
Range. So when would you go public with it?
Probably after that first bail. And then we have to find storage for it and then how we're going to actually process it. Because right now, we've got two cardboard compactors. And during the week, we'll take one out and put aluminum in there or something else. We're going to bail. And then we have two dedicated bailers for the number one plastics, get its own. Number two plastic has its own. And then, so that's the four bailers we have right now. And there's not really space to stick another one in there right now either. So it might be one of those things where we might have to stop pilot for a little bit, bail it, take, say Wednesday, go through, start bailing it, finish it by Friday. And then we could probably use that spare shipping container that we've got our storage bins in and just start filling that with it. And it's actually shocking how much we're getting. It's just contamination. The number five yogurts or number seven iced tea jugs and stuff like that. It's pretty shocking how much we've actually gotten. It's just contamination at this point.
Should I add to it, would mine?
Go for it.
But it's right over the top.
Yeah, because we're taking it out anyways, but...
Is that what you're buying seriously? Because otherwise, it's going in a dumpster.
Yeah, I mean, you can tell some of those...
Strategically planning to make a decision based on what comes in.
Yeah.
Be what I have to add on.
Yeah, that's on point and all. Because we've been... We've sorted out, we've got the ways. We'll walk by, pick it out. Then we've got the bin on back, so we'll just dump it in there. And then the last kind of issue with it's an issue, but the next thing we're going to have to figure out is windows situation. That's probably going to be the biggest thing where we're going to put it in the line of recyclables. Because we're still trying to fix the tweaks in the glass windows just because it's still black in there. Going to have to figure something out. So I'm almost one of those things where you don't want to... Because once I do it, I want to shift it so everything will be all at once without being drastic change or having to change it again. So my first stop is to remove the glass down to the cardboard windows and literally box it right in. So it's going to contain self-containment in there. And then have two windows for the glass. And then maybe the next window, number one, number one. And then the third one would be three through seven. And then more paper down on the other end of the building. So it's going to be a little tweaking and organizing. But I don't want to... I want to have a firm plan before I actually put it into action. Because it's going to... Whatever we do, it's going to cause some sort of confusion. That's why having all the high-certified staff will help. Tell people where to go, why we're doing it, the changes. So there's a lot to it, but it's going to... I think it's going to be very beneficial. It's definitely a big project, but once we get it all figured out, I think it would be a good thing to have. Not going to make a whole lot off it, but we're going to save not a lot of weight from more volumes. So we're going to be able to fit more compactors. Really just kind of tweak everything and make it as easy as possible for us and staff without overcomplicating it either. So it's a big task. And Nick's been pretty much heading that part of it and just kind of been giving suggestions here and there. So once we get closer to that first bail, we're going to probably start making decisions on how we're going to roll it out, when we should roll it out and really go from there with it. So give people an opportunity to see and get a new sign for it, ship some of the other windows. So I don't necessarily want to... Used to be able to do that, but I think all at once, have the windows set up and then start firing all cylinders with it.
Just seeing from having walked back and forth. The corrugated and the mixed and the newsprint were sorted in line. And then all your plastics were in line.
Make them a little easier, yeah?
Yeah, because it would sort better, at least as a consumer.
Yeah, yeah. And that's been the beauty of observing over the past two years with the new layout. Because obviously cardboard's one of our bigger items. And so everybody's trying to get to that cardboard window. So it's full stop right at that first window. So I think pushing that down even to the other side of the center door, I think would make it a little more beneficial for residents and then parking. It would all tie in together and really help stuff out. So it's a task, but we're rolling with it.
When's this strike coming in?
So we kind of caught between subbing that out or trying to find the time to do it.
You know, you don't have the time.
I know. I just hate to spend the money if I don't have to.
Could you coordinate with Joe when he's going the sidewalks and Matthews Road? It's probably going to be a lot of part of the summer.
Yeah, that might work out. Because this morning, actually, John and Charlie have been on a tear with Brooming. Both the compactors, when they got swapped out last week, they sprayed it down, chipped all the nasty stuff off it and then let it dry for the day and then push it in the Bobcat. And then today, John actually went through the whole drive-through area after the compactors. He took the leaf floor and everything and then washed all down with the dust out of there. So there's a lot of stuff on there. So we'd have to probably do that again before repainting. Just because I couldn't believe how much stuff actually came out of there, so... So that's all for the ongoing I have. And then for upcoming for the summer, wastewater building replacement. Haven't really had time to dig into that, but I'm running out of time. I want to really dig into it before it gets too late in the year. So I've pretty much got the design and layout done. I need to do... I need to talk to the D E S about approval for it. I'm not sure if we're going to need to adjust a permit or not. With the construction for the drive-through, the overhang, they said it wasn't really necessary, but there's a lot of changes. So I thought we should do it anyway, so we got the permit approval last time for that, so I'm just going to double check. So if they said that for that, I'm assuming we won't have to, but I'm just doing it anyways. It's a simple application, just verify your permit and go through it that way. And after that, I want to do the, apply for the waste oil grant, anything that deals with the waste oil state. That's up to $2,000 grant program that you can apply for. And then planning board for approval and then find a set R F P and then reconstruction after that.
Will Adam and Stefan work with you on the application for planning board?
That'd be great. Yeah, I'll, I'll touch base with him next week about that. The other big item on the C I P this year was the purchase of a second skid steer.
The R F P, what, what are you going to do about that? Have you got that listed here for your waste oil? What's the timing on that?
I figure after the, I talked to the D S for approval and then talk with Stefan about the planning board. Just get all that together because I need to talk with Chris about fine tuning it. Because I know the stronger the R F P, the better product you're going to get. And I'm not really sure with some of the specs on the stuff and the fates in it, so. I was just going to have Chris give me a hand with that and kind of spice it up a little bit, make sure that everything looks good and up to spec for that, so.
Is there any modular units available?
I haven't really looked at that. I have started with, can't remember the name, but they have prefab buildings that they'll come and do a new site. But that would involve taking up the old foundation, the old pad and then taking everything down. And I think it would be a better idea to leave the pad and just build up from there. So we're just saving money on that end. We don't necessarily dig into whatever's underneath it. So I kind of say it's a lot of problem liability on that end. I think pretty much same idea.
Does it go right down to grade or is there a block?
I think it's just a pad, to be honest.
So you might, you might want to consider putting a couple of rooms of block.
Yeah.
So that would be.
That's not a bad idea and kind of protect the size and everything, yeah. But for the most part, I'm picturing the same layout, except it's going to have three bays. So the two are going to be connected and the left bay is going to be for universal waste. So I'll open up some space in the warehouse where we could store three through seven plastics. And it'll give us a little more wiggle room, so we'll have like light bulbs, universal waste, light bulbs, fluorescent bulbs, mercury containment devices, C F Ls, so pretty much anything in that category. And then waste oil will have the two other bays and one bay will be for all the empty and clean stuff. And then middle bay will be for filling in and full containers. So be able to just pull them straight instead of trying to wiggle around there and all that stuff. So that'll be, that'll be huge to do that and be able to take some of that stuff out of the warehouse at this point. And then purchase of the second skid steer with a rock bucket instead of forks. New Hampshire Beautiful has grants for 5,000 on these items. And we haven't had one in a couple of years and it's a justified need, so I think I have pretty good odds of getting it. This will give us an opportunity to really double up and get more stuff done quicker. So right now we were averaging about 1,000 hours a year just in operation of the Bobcat. We purchased it in 2022 with four hours on it. We already had 2,800 hours, so it gets a lot of work. And like today, Nick loaded a cardboard trailer and I had a bunch of oil and a little bit of fire, a crack brush pile. And can't really do anything clean, so I had to pick up everything and get ready for the day. So could have really got a lot more done, but we still made $1,000.
Is that the C I P schedule?
Yes, yep, that and waste oil building. And like the rock bucket would be perfect for the compost pile, would be perfect for the brush pile. Because then it'll pick up all the sticks and all the compost will just fall out and we can pipe that neatly. We could burn it at that point as it is, so. And then we won't have to worry about it if we have a breakdown with our current one. It'll give us just a backup in case. So say we blew a hydraulic line last night, we wouldn't have been able to load the truck today. That would push that back, it would push our other shipment back because we've got three shipments we're waiting on right now. They could show up any day. And so one of those things where you could be ahead of the charge if you're not ready for it, whatever the charge might be. And then renting a skid steer is about 1,300 a week, so we'll avoid that cost. We do do most of the maintenance in-house, pretty much anything except major repairs, cylinder repacking and stuff like that. It's a lot easier to have than if we didn't just do it. But like if we're having come down for just an oil change and hydraulic swap, it would be 750 bucks just for the truck to come. So I'd say it's quite a bit on that end where a simple oil change will cost us 100 bucks maybe. So save quite a bit of money with that and ensures the longevity of the machines. So we're going to get good use out of it with the second one. Hopefully it will offset, so we won't be putting as much hours on a single machine and kind of eating it out both ways. So it'd really be beneficial and then we'll be able to train another person to get in there. Because right now it's Nick and I, not fighting, but trying to see who can use it to get what done first. So that'd be nice to have another person to be able to hop in and say, mold pro comes with a little bit of cardboard. They can hop in and unload it and bring it into processing, so. And then the next item was painting lines, which we just talked about. Another thing we're working on, we have probably 75% of them done, facility signs. So the main ones are compost, concrete and metal. Both the burn pits have new signs now, both C N D containers have new signs. I ordered five new signs to the New Hampshire Beautiful grant program, so we've got five signs for free. And those are going to be based on burn pit, C N D, and they're going to be doubles of both. And then thank you for recycling for the package, so have help clean it up a little bit.
You've done well, taking advantage of New Hampshire Beautiful.
Yeah, they're great, they're real helpful. We just got 10 cases of blue bags for roadside cleanup for free from them. So it's, they're a really good organization. And then the next item is new front gate sign, something that's dilapidated, falling apart and I can't look at it anymore. I spent the winter making a bigger replica of any of the town signs, like say the highway car works at the address on it, what it is. So I think I have an eight foot version of that, basically somebody dropped off a sign of the same shape, so I just painted it green, put 97 paint straight on it. And then the front gate sign now is just a case of old wood, so I'm going to pull that off, put it on there. And then piece like concrete into metal posts, so it'll be lighter, cleaner. I think it'll look really good compared to what it is now. That's another thing where we could get a new front, new actual front gate sign next year if we wanted to and just swap it out. Take it off the green sign and put a new one on and that's for New Hampshire Beautiful also. We had a resident, resident donate materials for a garden chef for Charlie and Joan. Donated, I think, $300 worth of good wood and materials, so just going to find the time to get that. But get it sorted away. Once I get the front gate sign out of the workshop, I'm going to ship that over, put that in there. And by the looks of it, I've probably got enough to make two. I think he overbought for us. We're very grateful for it. Because it's nice to have actual good wood and set this up and pick it out and seen deep in. Because I don't want to throw my wood and get it all day long, so. Nice straight two by fours, so that was very helpful. The last thing I just need to look for is two doors and a couple of windows, which that won't be a problem to get. I've still got old siding from when they redid the building. I've got spare siding, so I can pretty much match the building with those. And I'm going to use the same thing to protect the propane tanks inside, just a simple lean two to keep the snow from falling on the copper lines and avoiding that disaster. I noticed that it was the day after they, we saw it, we had snow. And then I saw so old, I was like, oh boy, I didn't see that one. So we got it covered right now, so we were a good threat on the interior, but I don't want to leave it looking like that through, through next winter, so. Get that done by, hopefully by fall. It's kind of at the end of the list because it's something important this time of year. But at least get it cleaned up and then simply, simply put a couple of ballers, say, just protect them and should be good. Then the next item, this kind of follows up, it'd be C I P for miscellaneous or back forty cleanup. It's just rebuilding the glass bunker. I talked about it, I think, last year, but right now we're waiting for shipment. Because we've been shipping our glass to Canada for cheaper. I think we're at 25 a ton compared to shipping it to Keene's 45 a ton. And the 25, there's no trucking with it, so it's a really good deal. And we can get up to 30 tons in the truck and then they just head for Ontario. So once, we're scheduled to have a shipment within the next couple of weeks. I've been waiting a couple of weeks. It's been kind of painful, Canada thing and stuff. But I'm shooting to have another shipment in July just to get rid of everything we've got there. And then I'm going to order some blocks just to rebuild it, double store it so it hides up in the road. Then we can store more and like right now we're at capacity and don't really know when they're coming. So it's kind of, we can't push it up anymore, so it'd be nice to have the second, set of blocks to push that back. So that'll have to line up pretty, pretty good, get to know the shipment and then order the blocks and then come in and just set them in place. And I believe last time I looked, they were $50 for four by four blocks. So it's a good deal and then you got to bill recharge, but pretty good deal on those and simple, they're, they're 5,000 pounds, I believe. So they're not going anywhere. Kind of another one I want to get done just before, snowballs, I don't want to talk about that already, but it's been flying so far. Is to repair the fence line in the both gates. The front gate's kind of holding on right now. It's not falling, but the front over is preparing to broke on it. So it's a simple fix, just going to get out there and then straighten bottom so it doesn't keep rattling every time we open it. And then back gate's just a little broken on the bottom, so just going to replace that instead of working on the whole fence line. I don't really see any need for that anymore. We can fix the fence areas and I've got old fencing from the old waste oil building help pack. So we've got enough fencing gates to do that on our own. And then the last thing is just shipping some gear around, organizing and that's just waiting on shipments. And we ship out number one plastics, our next one, aluminum's coming up also. So we're setting up quite a bit of material going on right now, so it's going to be good and we ship out full loads. And then we can get a better understanding of when our next one's going to be, so we can start staging for that, watching the markets. And we're going to get the best pricing for it, so that has been going really well. And then for 2026, I had wanted to do it this year, but with all this stuff, I'll see when we're going to have the time. Because this one's going to be even more involved in the plastic program, is the food waste diversion. Been doing a lot of research on it, but it's implemented and get everything set up. I think it's just going to be too overwhelming this year. But if we can get ahead, then that'll jump up the list and get to that sooner. And then 2026, the other one was waste water, least water treatment operator certification test. And that was either December, June and next year. And then more outside organizing and cleanup next year. That should be the final touches after three years of seeing how the facility is working as it is. And got a pretty good read on how everything's going, so a few little tweaks, notice we can make. And hopefully I shoot for next year to have all that done and we can get to some real meaningful stuff and research how to take more out of the waste stream. So once we get some of these smaller items off our list, I think we'll really be able to start cruising, get more done. And then on the last page is our current conversion rates as of today. Again, we're sitting on probably 40 to 50 tons of recycling right now. That's ready to ship out between the different grades and different materials. So that number will go up once, once we ship that out. Right now it's just been more or less the M S W weight, so it's kind of complaining the number. It's not really showing the true number right now. But as of now, we're at a 32.75 diversion rate, which is pretty good. I wanted to go up, I think I said 40 to 45 this year. And I don't think we're going to have an issue getting that, with how we've gone, everything's been going. Residents have been great about recycling. We haven't had really any issues, so. Still been doing some bag checks, but for the most part, I think we've got all the problem people out that weren't doing it right, so. And then below that is cost avoidance and revenues. Again, the recycling we're sitting on will push that number far up once we do get, get that out there. And the more recycled, the more we're avoiding, so.
You, last year we talked about the diversion from one community to our community outside of the afternoons.
Yes, yep, yep.
How are we doing with that?
That was one of the ones of operating numbers, right, that we were talking about. That might be a 2026 item. It's kind of hard to say. We've been busy, but normal busy on Saturdays. And we know 95% of the people we know are coming through. Kind of a hard one with contractors, I think, because you can't really, they say Partridge Bay relay or wherever. Unless you drive out there and see a work truck or a dumpster, you don't, can't really verify it, I guess. We do our best on that, but I think that's probably where we're going to see the most drop off. Because people can't make it to Keene with a trail of load of stuff on Saturday instead of coming to us at 3:30 instead of going to Keene by Newton. So we have been working on it. And I did, I did do a rough sketch for hours just to see what it would look like if we did do seven one on a Saturday. We'd definitely have to open up a different day to kind of offset some hours and keep it roughly around 36 to 40 hours. But most towns around are anywhere from 30 to, Keene I think is 50 something hours. So I did everybody in Cheshire County just to see what the actual ratio is. And some towns are two days a week for 15 hours total, so we definitely have to bosh it, but we need to be open at least four days minimum, so. And some of that would be saved Wednesday morning. I don't see the need to open at 10 p.m. over. So we could do seven to five, seven to five, seven to five, seven to one on Saturday, something like that. It would still keep, keep it normal, but give people opportunity to get there before work, after work. A lot of people obviously don't work Saturdays, so that's kind of their key day to go, but.
It's going to be a tough transition.
Yeah, and that's all. Yeah, so I wanted to recycle it a bit first and then make sure we get that all squared away and.
How are we on the stickers?
Good. We've kind of, I think I reordered batch last fall. I had 2,000 or something like that, so. Town hall's been giving out quite a bit. We've given out quite a bit. Yeah, we've got to be around 2,000 painted out at this point, so.
So if someone comes through without the sticker, we're checking.
Yep, yep, and especially our big day for that is Target Amnesty Day. You drop off four car bags for free and you have to have a sticker. That's part of the check sheet that given when they set out there for that. So that's helpful at that day, but for the most part, we know 95% of the people who live in town that have come in. And then you get people who are moving, say, I don't know if they brought their stuff from their old house, they're out here. So it's kind of complicated on that end, but I think the more, once we look at hours and then the more we can take out of the waste stream. It's going to be a whole combination of stuff that's going to line up to really even it all out and make sure we're doing the best we can with it, so. And then the last one is just a comparison from 2024 revenues to 2025 with the estimated revenues for this year. Balance uncollected and then percent up to collect. And that also ties in with all the recycling we're sitting on right now. So probably by end of July, we'll have a firm look at the year moving forward. We'll have everything shipped out by then. We'll be working on our second shipment for everything. And something like cardboard, we could be six shipments deep at that point. Right now we've got two down. Typically we do 10 a year and we've got probably another half load. So it, it won't take long. We'll start moving that and get to good revenue. And right, like right now, we've got probably close to two loads of aluminum that's at roughly 78 cents a pound. And that I've already had ordered, so we're just waiting on the confirmation of the truck to come, so. Got quite a bit of stuff sitting on. I think we're going to have really good revenue a year. I'm estimating 65,000 and last year we did 58,000 and that was good year, so. I just want to see that going up and up and up, so the better we can do, the more money we can make on it. I think we've got probably some of the best bales around, to be honest. Material wise, it's clean. There's no, hardly any contamination. Like the number one plastic, we used to ship to South Carolina, so trucked down all the way there. The trucking's included in the price, but we've been shipping it straight to the vendor in Canada. So we're getting the price over the place we're shipping down in South Carolina. But the issue with that is they have a much lower contamination rate. I think it's 1% of, say, three through seven plastics. We have 1%, contamination rate in that. And then zero for cardboard or dirt. And then zero for cardboard or dirt, trash, anything, this is zero, they'll ship it back to you, we'll find you or. So we've been shipping straight to them, they're happy with it, we're getting a good pricing, so it's been working out really good. Same thing with cardboard, we've been able to go to different vendors because we send pictures when we, before we ship it out to the NRA, we confirm it, send it to the vendor and then they'll give us a price there and been consistently great, so we haven't had any complaints with that. So everybody's been doing a great job on the inside, residents have been helping out, so overall, it's going really well, but always, always improving.
Good job.
Any, any questions or?
Yeah, so I have two questions, is there a place we can actually drop the three to seven off right now, boardman pilot?
Um, if you let somebody know, we can dump it for you, definitely. Um, we just don't have a window right now.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I didn't know if there was a side place or whatever and I would contribute to that initial uh, pilot layout.
Yeah, and I mean, I could probably even put um, a bin, I wouldn't want to put it outside cause everything will go in there at that point, but I could definitely put a bin towards the garage door, that way somebody can just come and dump it.
I'll, I'll inquire whether you were there for some.
Yeah, cause we've got the bin right next to the number two window right now, so if you just ask somebody to dump it for you and then.
And then the other question is, um, are you looking for used windows?
Yeah, yeah, I prefer actually.
And how many, two, four, three?
Uh, probably two or four.
I'm gonna have uh, three windows, there's actually a fourth one, but one of them's cracked, um, so you don't want that one. Um, but I have three windows, uh, that they might, might work out well.
Yeah, definitely.
I think you double make the rush just the other day, it's inside.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um, I'll, I'll have him drop them off when they're being replaced.
Yeah.
And have him note that they're there and they're next, they're, they work pretty perfect, the Dodge, just throwing in the contract today.
Yeah, that'd be great, appreciate that.
So expect that probably within the next two or three weeks.
Yeah, oh, I got a little ways to go on those anyways, so I appreciate it.
Once you have those windows, then you got it all.
Yeah, exactly, we'll be in good shape then.
Thanks, Mark.
Hey, thank you.
You need later, yeah, I saw it.
Yeah.
Might be surprised.
The skids there, new or brand new?
Um, ideally, yeah, but if I do find a used one with low, low hours, that's an issue.
The bug cap, bug cap brand new, right?
Yep, four hours on it.
Yeah.
And I mean, we had a rental from, the problem about those is typically the used ones are either from construction companies or rentals. We had a rental of last year and we blew hydraulic line, um, cause that was under the motor, way in there. It's one of those one-time clips, so I just let them deal with that, cause if that goes, then you're really gonna screw more stuff up. Um, but the rental we got was four hundred and fifty hours. And, oh my God, that was worse than anything else, so there's no cool in it.
What's the, what's the estimate cost of the one?
Um.
About?
Probably sixty, sixty-five. And last time, I think when we bought this one with a trade, um, and I paid fifty-two and you get a discount for paying upfront municipal discount.
Right.
Um, so it'd probably be sixty, sixty-five without any of that. Obviously, we won't have a trade in this time, but if we can get the five thou- five thousand dollar grant and then um, the municipal discount, then maybe fifty-five, something like that. And the rock bucket, I think it's three, and the forks are fifteen hundred, so it'll probably be around sixty with everything, so. And then hopefully, instead of every five years, it'll be seven to ten years placing.
Sure.
And then that'll, those maintenance you have to maintain, that's a problem, that's a problem with the rentals, cause we got two days into it and it was a track skid steer and the track was all screwed up going into turn, four hundred and fifty hours. And we've got twenty, almost twenty-eight hundred hours and it runs like a top, so just get it taken care of.
It's good, I, I'm a big fan of, to be honest, so if you're gonna get a lifespan and take care of our stuff and.
Yeah.
And buy it as well, but sometimes you find clean stuff, you could get lucky.
Yeah, oh, well, definitely. Yeah, cause then I'll save more money towards a class concrete or.
Yeah, I understand.
And then say there's a two-hundred hour one, which I've seen on there before, that, that would be something though.
Right.
But everyone will look at it, test drive it first, everyone will just blind ride something like that.
Right.
Great choice, nice show.
Thank you.
Very nice show, very impressive.
Yeah, we're slowly.
Boy, huh?
Thank you.
Yeah, does a really good job, Laurie.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Yep.
This is me. I, I missed something, it's on agenda that I'd like to pull back. It's the, the grade memorandum of understanding. I just asked that we modify our approval of the consent agenda, cause we pulled that back and for us to discuss.
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Take somebody.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
You understand what we're trying to do? Is that, all in favor? But the, the reason for that is that we've, we've had some changes in people that were very instrumental, that have moved on. And I think we should take every day and, and really go through what, and then all originally stated, see if anything has changed. Um.
Can I have a second?
I did.
This is just a, a piece of information that we, we have to discuss at a later date. It involves Steve Vittle, Teresa and Lee Dunn in the section. There's apparently, there's quite a few trust funds that have been set up, individual trust funds for people, for cemetery plot maintenance. And some of these have been ongoing for decades. And it was a time apparently when the town did not maintain the cemeteries, so people were paying in for it to have perpetual care. But now the town does maintain them, so there's not a lot of money in each of them. But there are enough, and it's a tremendous time restriction, or time consumption for the trustees of the trust funds as well as the finance department. So, but at this point, Lee is on vacation and I, I think Teresa has a very good handle on it and could be ready the next week or the week after, once Lee gets back to talk with us.
Just when Karma bought those funds, crossing more in time to maintain, then we're getting a ton of these things signed.
A hundred percent, yeah. Again, I don't know enough about it to, I know enough to be dangerous at this point, so I'm gonna stop, but. But I was, I was basically told that, that the goal is to stop new ones and stop, I don't know if you can stop money from coming in, but.
Pilot, if we're ready to roll them into another general fund that we can use, you know, similar on that, but I don't know. Cause there's legal stocks that we have to figure out.
Right.
And I do leave that up to Stephen Ricks.
Well, you're still on.
As an alternate.
Yeah. I appreciate it.
We met today, we met last week.
Did you? How'd you like the new conference table?
That's nice. How'd you get the old one out?
That must've been something.
They took the legs off.
That's what I would've thought, yeah.
Yeah, be the only way, I don't know how they lifted it though.
No, they have these four people there.
Oh, did they?
I, I missed the, the nap doll and the, you know.
You missed what?
The nap on the table.
Oh, yeah, that's true, that's true. Uh, another, just a, a point of information. I, I had an extensive conversation today with Alan Treadwell, who's our I, our IT provider through Twin Bridges. And they're, they're working through the process of, of updating our systems and finding some things that don't necessarily make a lot of sense. So just to sum that up, he's, he feels he'll have everything done within two weeks. So I asked him if he could give us a date, a week of the twelve, that he as a board could be in public with Lori, Megan and Christine, who's now handling the website. Just so that we can all have the understanding of how the process will be moving forward. It'll, has a lot to do with cybersecurity, although we won't discuss that, but, but the concept has a lot to do with that. So that'll be coming up. Uh, Jim, you wanted to discuss with regard to Stuck End with Lori and Michael Brantley?
Oh, yes. Um, you're gonna need to contact Michael here and there, we all understand that. But I thought we could put some guidelines on that, you know, just so it isn't just, you know. Um, I'm open for suggestions, you know, what you think. Maybe, maybe you, maybe it's too early to know where you're gonna be, cause you have to get in there, I don't know, Robbie, but. I just, I want Michael and you to be on the same page, I want Michael to understand what it is too, so if it isn't up in the air, it's just, you know, what you need and what, because there is gonna be incidents, you're gonna have to say, what's this all about?
Yeah, I'm actually gonna see Mike tomorrow, very important, I'm gonna straight around him. Um, so I can chat with him about that and see what he's willing to give us and.
Yeah.
Probably able to probably know what I'm gonna need, all the more help with it.
Yeah, just so the select was on page with, you know, you know, that we have a guideline on, where is how much we're gonna use and, you know, just so we know, so it's all clear, it's not confusing, or you said, like, in this column every day and.
I know, I told, he, he said I could call him anytime, I'm like, maybe he, he never said that, he said, no, no.
Yeah, so we need to, we need to definitely. So why don't we leave off of this, why don't we let them need, discuss the plan, Lori bring it back to us and say, this is what I was hoping to get, that's on with you guys.
What I've done, cause I've stayed in touch with, with Michael, is when, when there's a question that I have, I'll, I'll say that I want you to bill us for this. And then once that's over and we're talking about something else, his golf game or whatever, he, he's off the clock, but at least he, at least he has a clear direction, or if it's just a call for something specific, then I let him know right up front that I expect that we'll, we'll be there for that.
Or I can put an hourglass on your desk and you can talk and say, Jimmy said I'm running out of sand. Yeah, so we'll let you, we'll let me do that and then we'll bring it back up and then you can say to us, this is what I'm hoping to get from Michael and Michael's willing and, and then you can clarify with Michael or Bill or whatever we do. Just so we're all on the same page about how much we're gonna use and how much we're gonna spend. Yeah, but there's kind of, but when you think about it, if we do have a phone call away, it might save money in the long run versus you researching, instead of getting Mike to the answer. Now we're not spending money on research and all that, so it might pay for itself, that's the rule.
I have a couple of follow-ups from last week.
Yeah, I spoke to, actually Garage Missus, I gave her a recall as far as the unit, uh, Richardson Bar. I spoke to uh, Eric and Chris and they're apparently already doing that anyway, whenever they're a joint uh, approval of whatever they go together. If they, as Chris said, he has to do a fire, the fire department's on it, he has to do a fire. Doesn't have to do a fire, who doesn't, so we, that'll stay there.
Okay, so those are all.
Yep.
Great, thank you. Uh, we have consideration of the Mountain View Cemetery to whom repair. The people have an opportunity, we discussed it last week, so there's a, there's a motion in the packet. Just hand it up.
Okay. We have a question. I'd like to authorize a, Joe, you sort of spent more than seventeen fifty out of the cemetery's pension fund to make repairs for details provided.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then we have this one here, that Teresa kindly put together for us. It has to do with the new reception window and they did start working on it. This is what we approved last week, this motion authorizes the expenditure.
Make a motion to authorize the expenditure of up to fifteen hundred hours for the town hall repairs. Make next in improvement, expandable trust fund for the new reception window at town hall.
Second.
All in favor? Um, we, we, as you know, we have this vehicle that was turned over to the, the town staff from the police department and it seems like every other week we're coming back asking for more money. So we now have, hopefully the last repair, which is for a right front wheel bearing. And the request is for three hundred and sixteen dollars and any cents.
That's a pretty good deal. The last time I had it done at my Ranger, it cost me over five hundred.
Wow, we have the right vehicle. Yeah, I'm not questioning that, it's just, it just each, each week.
Well, with, with, with these people that has, that work really hard and's got a lot of miles, you're gonna come to us.
Sure.
It's gonna happen.
No, we, I, I think we agree with you. It'd be just nice to have it at once, uh, cause then the next one we're gonna do is tires.
We could almost get them on sixty thousand, sixty thousand all along.
We could. Yeah, you talked to Steve about that, when the group starts meeting late summer, create that motion.
I make a motion to approve up, to approve the additional necessary repairs for the code enforcement vehicle up to three hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Do we need to know where that's coming from, or do you already have that?
It's coming out of operating, but if you don't, you're just, it's fine.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Where did that come from?
Megan organized it beautifully and of course, I have no idea where it is.
What are you looking for?
I was saying, even color coded.
It is color coded. Uh, we have a, we, we discussed hours of operation for the planning department. So we had some concerns that people were coming in and staff wasn't available. So we had our attorney draft, draft language, so that we now have coverage on a daily basis. I don't know where I put that, so anyway, if I come up with it before we close, we'll. That's it, look at you, how did you get that? So this is uh, office hours and organizational structure. As we work to improve the services we provide in town, it is imperative that the planning office serve the hours of town hall is open. The Board of Selectmen have provided directive stating, starting May first, twenty twenty five, that the planning office, town planner and assistant town planner will be in the office Monday through Friday during town hall hours. The only exception to this is where there was an agreement at the time of hire that an employee could work remotely. There will be no exceptions or negotiations going forward, effective immediately. The assistant town planner will report to and be supervised by the town planner. And please sign an acknowledgement that you will receive, so that will go to the, the employees' insides. So, any discussion about that? Any motion?
We buy thirty percent office hours, I'll go with it, we'll go for it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Directly speed one, so I, we all have a copy. Marco stars. When I should sit back.
So, so is that, is going to make sure there's coverage, needs somebody in town hall? Because I know sometimes the town planners are out looking at things on the road and so on footwork.
We've, we've reorganized the office, uh, so at this point, the, the assistant town planner, the town planner and code enforcement are all together in the office, so it's reasonable to anticipate that they will be there. Uh, we're also moving towards an appointment based system that will go in place once the security door is, is put in. So the expectation is that, that people will make an appointment in advance. If someone comes in without an appointment, we have someone at the reception window that will determine if, if one of them are available. Uh, and if not, then they'll, they'll work with them to coordinate a, a meeting. But we, we, we think that this will go a long ways towards ensuring that there's someone there, most of the time. But you're right, there could be a time when all three of them are out on, on a project.
Yeah, but I guess the, the answer was, yeah, you wanna make sure there's at least somebody there for coverage.
Correct.
Okay, that's the, the point I, I want to make.
No, appreciate that, that's, that's the goal.
How about me walking in as a planning board member to get a packet or a trustee's meeting? Just show my face and you'll.
By appointment. The, the security door will be locked, so you would have to be buzzed in.
Okay.
And, and that goes for the Board of Selectmen as well.
Right.
We, we all, we, we should all be cognizant of the. We, we all, we, we should all be cognizant of the time and, and the effort that people are putting in and, and the disruption to their ability to do it and their, their work. And the other aspect is the concern we have for people just literally walking through that don't have any of it. We had someone last week didn't know a building they were in.
Right.
And it's, it can be kind of.
No, I think, I think it's good. And I, I do recall it would be a buzzer on both, both sets of windows. So I guess as long as they recognize, recognize you, and you state what your purposes are going to the trustees meeting, pick up a planning board packet, apply the file, right, I'm guessing.
Yeah, that, that would be understandable. Some of it's gonna be a little bit of a hiccup at the beginning, but we are, currently, department heads have their mailboxes in the town clerk's office. We're gonna switch that over to the tax collector's office where the, where the person will be staffing the window so that they can just come in and get their, get their mail and leave their mail or whatever. And we could certainly, that's a good idea, Mark, because we could certainly do the same thing with, with medium packets.
So I broke the code from the dock door already, so.
I couldn't hear you.
I broke the code from the dock door.
Oh, you did? Okay. Well, I think, I think a few people figured that piece out.
So. This draft, when I sent emails out about this, right? He, he, I couldn't get, get the draft, and he claimed it was attached. I had Tracy try it out for my son, so I had no, no way to get that draft. So is this the draft?
My, my thought was that we could take this with us and bring it back next week.
Oh, okay. Because I have some stuff.
I couldn't, I couldn't find it.
Oh, good. I thought that was the only one. I'm like, I'm not gonna be ready for this. And I'm trying to jam it in my head right now, but I do have some things that I live with.
True.
Okay, so we ain't gonna, we ain't gonna insist and stunt. Kind of, good job. I'm happy with that. So you have the same problem, huh?
Yep.
I even gave you a little bit of a ask.
All right. Unless I've missed anything, and if there's anything else, we have one more shot at public input.
Take it easy, I guess.
Well, we appreciate your input tonight, but thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right. We have.
See you tomorrow night, Jimmy.
What's that?
See Jimmy tomorrow night.
Is it tomorrow night already?
Yeah. It's half peak, so we.
Laurie's coming for me.
I'm gonna burn, Jimmy, come in here.
Okay, Gary, we're gonna go into the public.